Regular meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 24th day of January in the year 2024. My name is Marquis Harris Dawson. I serve as President Pro Tem of the City Council. All right, do members have items they'd like to call special? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to accuse myself from item two because my wife's employer has worked with an applicant in the past.
All right, Mr. Price is accusing himself on item number two. Mr. Blumenfield.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Oh, I thought they disparaged you, Groot. Um, let's see, we have items, it's a bunch of them, seven, I have, um, like nine, 10, um, a bunch of them.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
All right, so we have, we'll start off with item seven. That is a motion from known racist Kevin DeLeón, um, for charter school buses. Um, I mean, the L A U S D already has a huge fleet of school buses, so I'm not sure what, and of course, it's, you know, not even like you're funding field trips or anything with this motion. It's just, you know, I don't know if this is just like embezzling money to some friend of Kevin DeLeón, or, but it's just weird because like the L A U S D already has a lot of school buses, so what's the charter bus thing for? Um, let's see, we have, you know, it'd be nice if all the staffers would, you know, stop trying to distract the council members. Um, you can all shut up for a minute, the council members. Amelda, want to pay attention, Amelda? Amelda! Um, let's see, we have item nine, that is, um, it looks like removing some, um, some restrictions for parking for business owners, um, it looks like, um, you know, but you're constantly targeting unhoused people in RVs and such, but it looks like your, um, developer business owner, rich business owner friends are, um, okay with the parking, um, you know, you can just let them park wherever they want, whenever they want, but if it's an unhoused person, then, you know, just, you know, arrest them or just dump, force them to go to some camp somewhere, RV camp somewhere, you know. Can anyone actually hear me with all these staffers continuously chatting, um, as loudly as possible?
Mr. Grabner, I'm gonna need you to stick to the items, please.
I'm trying to get them to pay attention. Um, item 10 is, um, motion for some historical landmarks. We have, um, offices for a black-owned newspaper so you can virtue signal, you know, things like that. We have Kevin DeLeón on the council, right, Amelda? Um, let's see, we have, um, I guess that'll be all for now. Um, just, why don't you get your council members to pay attention? Would you stop chatting with your staffer, Amelda, and pay attention to the public?
Where is everybody? Well, they're all talking to the FBI this morning.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, some, let's see here, we'll just go for all the fucking items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Yes. So let's see here, oh, Amelda deferred number 13 because she's sneaky. Let's give her a hand. Well done. Yeah, very good. Yes, yes. Notice how she pays attention, Kevin? Hmm, see that? Yes, when it comes to the money, yum, 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 yum. Yes. And then we have number, let's see here, we have commission appointments to the Cannabis Commission, number 12? They never meet, every fucking time. Even Amelda admitted that. Yes, the Cannabis Commission's not meeting. Amelda promised to put those appointments off until they start meeting. She's a liar if she votes for number 12. You're lying. And then we have number 11, Kevin wants to talk about the Board of what? Building and Safety Commissioners. Oh, yes. One of the three things you have to do according to United States versus Jose Weis are, you have to pay off the building inspectors, donate to the office holder account, and pay off the council members. Let's give the city a hand. Well done. Yes, that's right. All for the price of Jose Weisar's asshole in a federal pen for the next 12 years. I think that's a good bargain. Let's see here, Marquisi, are you gonna make that trade?
Yes.
There you go. Okay, continue stealing. Well done. Then we have, let's see here, other kinds of shit. Oh, Price, number two, the indicted one. Oh, almighty indicted one, oh, oh, how we worship you!
Speaker, number two is not open for public comment, so please speak to the other items.
Well, asshole, um, if you were listening, Mr. Potato Head, Mr. Potato Head, I love you, yes, that potato head, you would know that number two, the indicted one, has recused himself, but he's still sitting in his chair.
So again, this is your final warning? Please move on to the other items, or you're gonna forfeit the rest of your time.
How the fuck in the face, sir?
Item number two is not open for public comment.
He recused himself. We'll just get on to the topic.
But you can speak to that during general if you'd like to.
Ow! Did you see what he, ow! Stay on the goddamn topic. I told you, animal. I'm sorry. Then, can we talk about CD 11, number three? It's on Kitty Hawk Avenue. Meow! That's right, and I hate fucking cats, no, on number three. And then number four, CD 10, the fake councilwoman Heather Hutt has never received a vote. Money, spending her goddamn money like an asshole. Yes, and number 10, seven, eight, nine, and 10, joining forces to steal federal and state funds, in my opinion. I'll be back to trash the Armenian pink-skinned dictator real soon. Thank you.
Next speaker?
This is Ruth. I'd like to speak on all available items, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the available items. That would be three through 13, so please begin.
Three to 13, okay, thank you. Um, so I wanted to talk about Kevin DeLeón, um, hiring charter buses. I want to know what they're for and where they're going. Um, if he's not funding an event for them, why does he have to take them anywhere? Like, this seems really suspect. Um, uh, I wanted to speak on, oh, I guess, I can't speak on, I can't speak on number one or three, uh, or, or one or two, I mean.
Item three is open. One and two are not.
The REIT, okay, yeah, okay. So, yeah, I, I really wanted to speak on, um, two items yesterday that were very important, and, and I wasn't able to speak because you lowered my hand, so I couldn't do general public comment, and also, when I was called to unmute, you, like, muted me again, so I just basically wanted to say that, that you're messing with general public comment, and people aren't being able to be heard, and I think people should be able to speak on item number one, because that's exactly what it's about.
So, Speaker, this is not on topic, so I need you to get on topic, or we're gonna move on to the next caller.
Okay, so I need-
Please speak to one of the open items.
You need to announce when you lower hands, so I'm going to try to give general public comment. Please say if I need to raise my-
Okay, Speaker, I can barely hear you, but it sounds like you're still talking about general public comment, so we're going to move on to the next caller, but you're welcome to stick around if you'd like to speak a general public comment.
Hello?
Hi, yes, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, 13 and 7.
I'm sorry, did you say two and seven?
No, 13 and 7.
13 and 7, okay, so you have two minutes for the items. Please begin.
Uh, item 7, uh, I am, I'm 7, I'm against Kevin DeLeón's charter school bus. I'm 13, I'm for the homeless people. We need to give them shelter. That's it, thank you. Come back for general public comments.
All items.
So, I can see that it's Stacey Segura-Bollinger, so I'm gonna ask that you, thank you. So, you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Okay, cool. Um, could you please remind me-
Hold on just one second. Mr. Spindler, sorry, your, your time is paused. Mr. Spindler, you know the rules, do not disrupt public comment, including the remote public comment, so this is your first and only formal warning. Sorry, please begin.
Um, I'm sorry, could you just remind me which items are available for comment?
Yes, so it's items three through 13.
Items three through 13, excellent. So we have a lot of rent escrow account program motions here, also known as REITs, and for those who don't know, um, that's when landlords are in violation of the law, they're not, um, holding their end of the bargain as far as keeping a safe, compatible clean property, um, but the tenants do not get a break on rent when they don't get a safe place, too, they just have to put their rent money in a separate account. Um, and then, um, after the landlord meets abatement agreement, they get all of that money. Uh, it would be interesting if that's how we dealt with other crimes, when someone stole something, they just had to get it back. When someone breaks something, all they have to do is fix it, there's no other kinds of restitution. Um, I think what we need to do is legalize rent strike. I think that, um, demonstrates better ethics than, um, rent escrow account programs in places that's been issued. Item 7 is, um, DeLeón and Pidia for charter buses. I like charter buses, I love buses in general, I think they're great modes of transportation, but I don't like, um, how close Pidia and Ms. Amelda Pidia and racist Kevin DeLeón are. Um, he was seen cowering around at her campaign event, Bob was there, Paul was there, which was funny, because at one time, Paul called for his resignation, and now he's hanging out with him at campaign events. Um, so eight, we have, um, cannabis regulation, department, communication. Interesting thing about cannabis is the city is more than willing to profit from tax revenue and regulation fees from the cannabis industry, um, but city workers still need to test negative for cannabis to be offered jobs. Um, so when it comes to, you know, profit and moving economic interests, yes, when it comes to personal choice and freedom about what we do in our, um, rest, spare time, um, no, and I think that points to our priorities as, um, a city and the council as a body. Um, and then we have, uh, the municipal code, land use provisions, regular, temporary regulatory relief of time limitations for automobile parking provisions. Parking is a serious issue. We need to spending more time getting cars off of the road rather than trying to mitigate parking further, mitigate traffic further. Um, you know, what works great in mitigating traffic and parking is getting people out of their cars and it's-
So caller, your time has expired?
Great, uh, all items and general public comments, I'll stand hold for that, but all items for now.
So you have three minutes for the items? That would be three through 13, so please begin.
Great, hi, danielgus.substack.com, and my new column today about the chaos at the L A Times, and more chaos at the L A Times relates directly to some of the issues here. For example, because the L A Times is so agenda-driven, item eight is about the Department of Cannabis Regulation. Um, when this department was started, you had a, a nice professional woman named Kat Packer, who was chosen for the job, we were told, because of her race, and because of her gender, and because of her sexual orientation, and of course, those things matter to you, pandering, instead of hiring the best person, not somebody who checks all the demographics. So that's why we have a problem with, problem eight, and of course, the L A Times now is paying for it with mass layoffs and more layoffs, if not a complete shutdown of the L A Times between now and the end of the year, which is what some of us are predicting. So for item number eight, these are problems that should have been addressed when you hired Kat Packer. They should have been vetted by the L A Times, and by the way, you have a problem now with item number eight on the agenda, which has made the illegal marijuana, the illegal cannabis in Los Angeles, less expensive because stuff that you're regulating is so over-regulated, is so overtaxed, you have-
So, Mr. Gus, you've used your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
Great, great, I'll continue that thought with, uh, item number, uh, 12, which is the, uh, appointment of Mario Melendez to the Cannabis Regulation Commission, and, uh, I have, I don't know Mr. Melendez, but I have a feeling, because based on your application and the letter from the mayor to your, uh, city council offices, uh, make sure that, uh, Mr. Melendez's gender is taken into consideration, Mr. Melendez's ethnicity is taken into consideration, uh, where Mr. Melendez lives is taken into consideration. Instead of, is he the very best person for the job? Maybe he is, but why are you focused on somebody's gender and race and zip code instead of the only question that matters? Do they have a conflict of interest? And is this the best person for the job? That's why, today, on danielgus.substack.com, I point the finger at the L A Times for not vetting these problems when this department was established and this city council hired a woman named Kat Packer, based maybe on qualifications, but front and center was her race and her gender and her sexual orientation, and that's why the L A Times, as I write today on danielgus.substack.com, is likely to shut-
Wow, you finally admitted, Kevin, that it was the mayor's nominee, not your nominee. Um, um, yeah, again, we got lots of, um, noise going on. Amelda's gone now, um, you know, we, we don't even have a quorum on this horseshoe right now, do we? Um, I mean, you know, you, you should be stopping the meeting and waiting for people to get back here, um, you know, it's just, it's just a joke, I'm, and like, like, you're just, the ways you go out of your way to just limit public comment, you know, someone, you know, calls in because they missed in-person comment, and they're in the chamber, you make them go walk outside to the hallway, instead of just letting them come up and speak at the podium, you know, and you're just arbitrarily trying to go out of your way to just limit comment at all, you know? Move, put, general comment is at the beginning of the meeting, as it says on the agenda, put it there. Resign him.
Go ahead, you have one minute for general public comment.
Yes, thank you, good morning, Arnold Sachs. Three things. One, are they gonna use a V A P with an R on it? And an R on the ballots, and an R on the, the, uh, the, the fake ballots? Are they gonna use that V A P, or are they gonna go back to the old system where they used booths? And if they're gonna go back to the old system where they used booths, are they gonna be able to have training for the people who work as, as, uh, voting clerks? Will they be paying them $15 an hour like they should? Number two, are they gonna continue denying L period, A period, and, and not get federal funding? There's a, there's an epidemic of lawland. You cannot get federal funding on lawland. It's about the retirement ceremony that was held here in city council by Mark Reilly Thomas retiring somebody from the state legislature. That was fucked up. And number three, are they gonna post ordinances like they're supposed to in three different places?
Hi, um, shout out to the Smokin' Scan family. Uh, number seven under chapter two of the L A City Council Rules clearly states that you shall hear us speak near the beginning of the meeting. Nithya, why are you so afraid to do the work for which you're paid? I hate that for the folks who call into meetings, they are likely to be prevented from speaking. This council body is only power-seeking, they don't care about democracy. Kevin DeLeón resign, I haven't forgotten your crimes, it's just that Nithya has failed, she's complicit as well, her promises are only lies she tells when it comes to racism.
Good morning, you have one minute.
Yeah, that's right. So let's talk about CD 1, Unisus is letting it die. Save CD 1, I left her three voicemails, please. Also, a shout out to those miserable fascist piece of shit communist L A Times writers. You can clear your desk out. All that shit you said about Kevin, fuck you, L A Times. All that shit you said about me, fuck you, L A Times. All that lying shit you said, fuck you, endorsing Nithya Ramanoodle, fuck you, L A Times. L A Times is a dirty piece of shit. They should fire every fucking reporter. Put in homeless to report the shit. No sport page, everything is bullshit, even current Price. They cover for his ass, how many fucking years did it take the divorce paper to get in the Times? Fuck you, L A Times, up the fucking-
Would you like to speak on?
Morning nerds and virgins, Brock Landers, Los Angeles private investigator, you, uh, forgot about me on, uh, on the regular comments. Uh, let's see, uh, Damon for Cannabis Commission, fuck Mario, why would you appoint someone to the commission that, on something they know nothing about? It would be like appointing Paul to the commission on satisfying a woman, or leading the exploration to find the clitoris. Paul, I read you're hanging up your grifting pants later this year. When you're sitting alone and those dark voices come, how disappointed are you in that L A is far worse off than when you found it? How disappointed is your father? How disappointed would he be? As your daddy, I'm very disappointed. And when whoever told you guys that you represented the douche and fiduciary better than any other city council, that wasn't a compliment. Not you, K D O, tell your T I said hello. Tom Cruise and David Miscavige's dick smell like Paul's shit. I'm out.
Hello, this is Sean Murphy from Canoga Park. Uh, we need to keep dead ice, we need to keep dead ice clean, clean sidewalks, maintain, help the homeless. Uh, I had some problems with the, with the, with your new phone. Uh, the city attorney on Friday just kept, I tell her, I'm ready for general public comment, I'm ready for general public comments, and she keeps, she keeps, it, it, I don't know if it's not with your system, but your, your system, thank you.
Yeah, hi, danielgus.substack.com, I have a story today about the Los Angeles Times, uh, the ma, the latest mass layoffs there, uh, may not be the last ones, and I suspect that before too long, the L A Times is going to become a bureau of a hedge fund that owns a lot of other media outlets, and why this was triggered and accelerated is because of this ongoing pushing of a narrative where you keep insulting the public, you keep having an agenda, just like city council, where race and gender and ethnicity and sexual orientation take precedent over the issue, over transparency, and, um, and that's actually not a good thing, but eventually, a business has to make money, and you can't keep insulting your customers, the way the L A Times has done, including to Larry Elder, which it said was the black face of white supremacy, and just like L A-
Mr. Gus, your time has expired?
Thank you so much, uh, Council President. Um, I'm right today to sort of recognize what's going on at the L A Times with the catastrophic media situation we're facing in the city and really nationally. Uh, yesterday, the Times began laying off 115 workers, including 94 reporters represented by their union, the L A Times News Guild. Also disturbing is that workers of colors were disproportionately impacted by the layoffs. Even though there was 25% of the folks laid off, 38% of those folks laid off were Latinx, 36% were black journalists, and 34% were AAPI. I know a lot of us don't like bumping into reporters in the back halls and all them questioning, but, you know, at the end of the day, they serve a very important purpose in trying to get out the information and really hold us accountable. I think especially in a moment like right now with this political climate, and especially when the voices of those folks laid off will no longer have a platform, I think it's important to recognize the situation that we're in. So I just want to say that I'm in solidarity with all the dedicated workers that are being laid off, and thinking of the folks that are still at the paper, that could face potential more layoffs, and hopefully that, you know, this can shed light on the importance of maintaining our institutions that are vital to democracy, and, uh, you know, hopefully, this is, uh, hopefully there won't be more, uh, negative things that come out of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto Martinez, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Soto Martinez, and I, unfortunately, I apologize, uh, Mr. Harris Dawson, but I think there's a lot of chatter in the room, and I really wish people would pay attention to this point right now, because the announcement that you made is actually very profound and important to the preservation of democracy in this city and across this country, and it's part of a looming default of what's happening to journalism across the nation. And I think it's important for everybody in the room to be paying attention and listening to this, and so I, I just, I was disappointed that there weren't more people paying attention to what you were saying in the moment that you were saying it around this horseshoe and on the, on the sidelines. Members of color of the, the reporting staff of the L A Times were disproportionately affected by these layoffs. What's even more disheartening was that, what I continue to find myself, frankly, very alone in advocating and talking about for the better part of a year and a half, is the absence of the Latino narrative and stories and experiences that continue to get left out, and it's not just at the L A Times, it's also happened, uh, in some of the motions and, and things that I've seen, that don't often give proper exposure to the fact that disproportionately Latinos are also being affected by a lot of the impacts when it comes to violence, when it comes to a whole host of circumstances. There's a lot of avoiding that conversation, or at least an oversight in everyone equally paying attention to it. And as we are watching another national election consume our attention with the same level of negative rhetoric that disproportionately targets the Latino community, it's, for me, feels like a further assault on silencing members of our community, not giving proper exposure to the experiences of the largely immigrant population of this city, but it was frankly, more, it was more insult to injury when I looked at how disproportionately Latino members of the L A Times were affected by these layoffs. In fact, this effort, if you will, to create the Delos section, that wasn't even fully integrated into the mainstream media part of the L A Times, was eliminated. Those are the things that we have to have uncomfortable conversations about, because that part has been silenced for a very long time, and just as we started to get some type of footing, where you had authentic conversations and stories from Native Angelinos raising these issues, that was the first on the chopping block. So I want to thank you for making, for, for bringing rise to this conversation today. Uh, I wish more people were really paying attention to it, uh, instead of chattering about and thinking that this is just another, uh, you know, frivolous announcement, it's not. It's very real, and it has very direct implications to the protection and preservation of democracy, and having fairness and equity represented in reporting, and that is what's been missing, and I want to make sure that no one misses an opportunity, because the silence is deadly when it comes to these issues, just as it is with any other issue that is an assault on, on communities of color. So I thank you for your comments, I thank you for bringing rise and attention to this matter, and colleagues, I suggest that no one sit quietly on the sidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. DeLeón.
So, sorry, before you begin, councilmembers, Mr. Sachs, Mr. Sachs, we are still a part of, we are still in the middle of this meeting, so this is your first and only formal warning. Please do not disrupt, disrupt the announcements portions of this meeting. Sorry, Councilmember DeLeón.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Gus Soto Martinez, wanna recognize and, and thank you for your comments, Ms. Rodriguez, I personally have-
Sorry, Mr. DeLeón, Mr. Sachs.
Sorry, Mr. DeLeon. Mr. Sacks? You're done. Our apologies, Mr. DeLeon.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. I'll, I'll just reiterate what I said a few moments ago to Mr. Ugo Soto Martinez as well as Ms. Rodriguez. Um, I rise with some mixed emotions, you know, personally, uh, with regards to the major layoffs at the LA Times. However, I want to step out of the role of a, a council member and address what you said and add to it. I, I do believe that any functioning democracy must have a, a very, very healthy journalistic institution unquestionably. It is with a heavy heart, um, and I'm sure with a shock that you also shared that the one hundred and fourteen folks who were let go disproportionately, many that were people of color, either African Americans or, or Latinos. So that's not lost on me at all whatsoever. And in a city that is majority Latino, or I should say majority people of color, majority Latino, uh, to have so many folks just easily let go does have an impact because our voices are not heard. The LA Times historically has been an institution, undoubtedly, that has been perceived and viewed as very anti-Latino. Zoot suit riots, the way they riled everyone up. Our beloved Dodgers, the real estate, how we got it. They helped rile it all up for real estate prices to get folks out and a whole variety of other issues, the way people are, been treated. Or people of great accomplishment who could never get their voices heard on the op-ed editorial pieces. But then you have other folks who have minimal accomplishments, but somehow, some way, perhaps the color of their skin influenced how they got published and other folks didn't get published. Trust me, we have ample evidence of that, you know? But, you know, it, it does hurt when you see so many folks, you know, cut out that way. Uh, this morning on NPR, I heard Erica Smith, who, my understanding is the chair of the Black Caucus of the Guild within the LA Times, lament also to the departure of so many African American journalists, which to begin with is, uh, almost non-existent, period, nationwide. So you take Latinos nationwide, the number of us who get onto, who graduate, who go on to higher education and to become journalists is limited to nonexistent. So, um, I, I just want to rise, uh, and share, uh, my concerns as well. Add to your comments as well, too, which I appreciate very much. Um, it is not easy, you know, within the context of a collective bargaining unit. And the issue of equity, what's fair is not always equitable. Just that, that's just the bottom line. But it's fair within the collective bargaining unit with regards to seniority. And what we know is right and what we know what we're missing, the voice, the perspectives, is always not right. Um, so I lament what is happening, you know, the hemorrhaging. I don't know if it's gonna continue. I know it's not unique to LA. It's happening throughout the nation, uh, whether it's media. I, I read just recently, uh, Univision, uh, took a huge hit. Uh, Telemundo took a huge hit. It's not unique to Spanish language. It's happening all over because of lack of revenues and the lack of digitization and monetizing the digitalness of that. But, uh, I just want to add my, uh, my two cents as well, too, because people of color, that voice has to be heard, uh, in a fair way, uh, and an objective way. And, um, just want to add my comments.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeon. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. And also, I mean, private businesses can do what private businesses want to do, but to know that someone like Jean Guerrero, the author of Haymonger, got fired in a year where it's a presidential election and so much is on the line, it just seems not like the right business move, but I'm just a council member. Um, I do also want to uplift some good news is that let's remember everybody that strikes work. The California Faculty Association went on strike this week. Um, myself, Councilmember Ugo Soto Martinez, uh, Dr. Rosio Rivas and others attended a couple of, uh, strikes throughout the city. We were at Cal State LA, um, and were there marching with the teachers. And I just want to say that they have come to a tentative agreement, uh, for their new contract, uh, their agreement with Cal State LA, which includes raising the floor for their most vulnerable faculty, safer workplaces and expanded parental leave. So just remember, remember everybody strikes work and just a lot of congratulations to the CFA on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Padilla.
So, but we'll, we'll move on from that. We'll move on from that because I want to, I, I want to also say that I went from that meeting and I had to leave a little bit early and I went to a, what I thought was a terrific community event. The, the police commission held a commission meeting in Watts at WLCAC, at Phoenix Hall. Historic and important. And I thought it was absolutely terrific that the community had the commission come to them and the community had a chance, not enough of a chance because there was a lot of speakers, but had a chance to speak to the commission about issues of concern to that community, which you can imagine the range of those concerns and interests and hopes and dreams for the future of LAPD. And going to Soto Martinez's and Rodriguez's comment about the press, really disappointing that I opened my clips this morning, not a word about it. Not a word about the police commission coming to a historically black community, predominantly Latino community today, having an opportunity in English and Spanish to speak to the commission, to talk about really important issues. Not, not a word about it in the paper. You know, we, I will say, and I appreciate that there's coverage of some other areas, but if I have a shooting in San Pedro, it's all over the press. If I have a shooting in Watts, it is not. And that goes to the problem of the press. That goes to the problem of the finances, the policies, the plans, the mistakes, uh, the inequities of the press. And it goes to equity and our drive for equity, and it goes to our democracy. So I'm hoping for a better future. I do appreciate that the commission came. And I would encourage all of our members to host the commission in your districts. It is real, it is raw, it's important. And I will also say for the future of this body, I'm looking forward to us meeting in San Pedro.
Thank you. Seeing, uh, no more.